All right, the time is 7:07. I call the Wednesday, December 18, 2024, meeting of the Village of Suffolk Planning Board Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. All right, thank you. You what? You're good? Okay. All right, first on the agenda, we have a sign application for Sushi Bada. Anybody here for that? Come on up and state your name and address for the record. Is this the one that we're demanding?
No.
Hi, yes, my name's David Kim, and I'm here for Sushi Bada.
Into the microphone, we can't hear you.
Yes, so, my name's David Kim, and I'm here for Sushi Bada sign application. The address, 74 Lafayette Avenue, Suffolk, New York.
Okay, one moment. Okay, is this one, okay. Yeah, so my understanding is it, yeah, I've got it all here. Is it does conform, is anybody having questions or comments?
I do. On the sign on the left, there is a phone number. Are we allowing phone numbers on the signs?
We used to not, but we haven't, we haven't said no for a while.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we, you know.
You okay with the phone number?
Doesn't matter to me, but I just want to make sure we're, you know, uniformed down.
I don't know if there's a prohibition per se, let me just check.
One second.
Yes. I know we weren't when Terry Rice was doing it, we weren't allowing it. But I think that was, I don't know if that, well.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good call. Who's this one?
Right here. This sign is there. This is the new sign they're putting, the second sign because they haven't had it attached.
I got it.
Yeah.
I don't see anything that indicates it was, it's in the code. I don't know if that was a policy, was that a policy?
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the application for the Sushi Bada sign?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Halperd, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries, best selected. You're good.
They can vote.
Approved, you're good, there we go, all right. Second on the agenda, Big Saving Dollar sign application. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Mai Te Shanin. I'm representing Spanish Signs and our client, Big Saving Dollar. And the location is at 53 Lafayette Avenue in Suffolk. And what we're presenting is, we're basically replacing the, the sign for a three-quarter PVC, PVC board, and we're just having the name of the, of the store, which is Big Saving Dollar.
Okay, and I believe it's too high by, what is it? Is that 36.24?
This one must have been.
Looks exactly the same.
It looks the same, it looks the same as the sign that's.
Yeah, it's the same sign than the other, same size, same.
So it's too high? Adam said it's too high.
Can I see it?
Do you have what Adam said?
And then everything is fine except for 30 inches.
Okay.
Oh, right, okay, a 30 inch, so the board's okay.
But the 30 inches is there, not the 30, and that's what's there.
I think this is similar to the other one. It fits within the channel, right?
Okay. It looks like they're using the same base.
All right, well, any comments on this? It's, the, the sign that's existing is 30 inches, but, you know, the lettering's actually smaller.
Yeah, because that two is small, just as one word, and then we have big seven dollars, so basically it's going to be smaller.
Anybody have a problem with this?
Nope.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the sign application for Big Saving Dollar?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Halperd, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So, is it a public hearing?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, and next on the agenda, we have a public hearing for 14 Wayne Avenue.
It's a continuation.
Yeah, it's a continuation.
Good evening, everybody. Ira Emanuel, Emanuel Law, PC, New City, I'm the attorney for the applicant. We were asked here in August, at which time this board granted a negative declaration on this project, and referred us to the ZBA. Now, the ZBA granted the necessary variances in October for front yard, lot frontage, and the number of parking spaces. And so we're back here this evening for a referral to the Village Board for the necessary special permit for this automobile repair shop.
Sure, so just to clarify, this is for automotive repair shop. This is not on for site plan review right now, this is on for, the applicant has applied to the Village Board for a special permit. The use of automotive repairs is provided in this district as a special permit use issued by the Village Board. So the Village Board took the application, referred it to this board for its comments, this board, and SECA. This board did perform SECA, and as Mr. Emanuel said, issued the negative declaration, and then referred it to zoning board of appeals for variances. The zoning board of appeals did apparently grant, I shouldn't say apparently, did grant variances as Mr. Emanuel indicated. So it's now back here for one last review, if you will, for any comments this board wishes to make to the Village Board, which Village Board will make a determination on special permit. And to confuse things a little more, as part of the site plan, I'm sorry, as part of the special permit review, they would obviously, at some point, need site plan approval. So it's not on for site plan approval yet, it's on for recommendations to the board with respect to the special permit. So I had a couple of questions for Mr. Emanuel, which I had mentioned to him earlier, if that's okay with the chairman, I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
So, in the special permit provisions for automotive repair in the Village Code, 26627, I believe it is, I'm sorry, 26628. For automotive repair specifically, to me, there's a couple of outstanding items I just wish you to clarify. So one is that the site shall have lot frontage of at least 100 feet on a public road, and have a depth of at least 100 feet. So did you want to address that?
Certainly. Just as a preface, these questions were previously, these questions were previously addressed to the board in a supplemental narrative that we had submitted back in January, and also again in the narrative that was submitted to the Village Board for special permit. Each and every one of the various conditions was referred to, responded to specifically. With respect to the one that Mr. Magrino is referring to, the lot does have only 80 feet of frontage, however, that is one of the variances that was granted, and as Mr. Magrino will tell you, the need for a variance does not preclude a special permit.
Okay, does anybody have any question on that? Want to comment on that?
You had another question? No, you had another question?
Oh, yeah, the other one, the second one was ingress and egress points shall be defined by the use of poured-in-place concrete curb sections and radii, and shall be designed to provide safe and convenient travel without the potential for traffic blocking onto the public travel way.
All right, there is an existing curb cut to the, to the lot. It was redone approximately a year or so ago by the New York State Department of Transportation, and the damage that is done as a result of the construction will of course be repaired, and the radii and the curbs will remain in place.
So, and that's in the, is that in the commentary, I think, somewhere? Okay. And then the only other one I saw, that's not necessarily a condition that addresses, that would be addressed at site plan, would be, a 10-foot wide landscaped area shall be provided along all property lines, excluding points of ingress and egress, and property lines adjacent to existing commercial uses. The planning board may require that landscaped area be densely planted with a mixture of shrubs, trees, and/or fence to create an opaque screen. So I guess the issue is that 10-foot wide landscaped area. I know we have discussed it, but just so you could put it for the record.
We'll work with, we have provided some landscaped areas along with the site plan. There is no, all the property lines are adjacent to existing commercial uses, so it's our understanding that the specific provision does not apply, however, we will work with the planning board to provide appropriate landscaping. The applicant wants the place to look nice, as I'm sure you do too.
So, you know, I mentioned to the chairman, these are items that the board, the Village Board would review for special permit. If you wanted, I could come up with a memo kind of along the lines, just recommending that the Village Board, you know, confirm these items, or make them conditions of special permit if it were to issue it. But then it's really up to the board if it wants to make any other recommendations to the Village Board with respect to special permit.
Any comments from anyone?
I had a few questions. What variances did you apply for and were granted? Can you list them?
For front yard, lot frontage, and the number of parking spaces.
The number of parking spaces, so the garages in this area, there are other garages, they, they have a decent amount of parking because people finish cars or are waiting to get cars in.
What, what was the statement?
Where is the parking? The question is, where is the parking in relation to the, looking at the site, it seems very small, there's a parking lot adjacent to it, that looks like 202 collision, has most of. Where would you park the cars?
Well, this is 202 collision.
Oh, it is 202 collision. So it's going to be one business then?
It's going to be one business, it's two owners, but it's going to be one business.
Oh, so it'll be a joint, they'll use that parking lot in between them?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I see.
And that's, and that's part of the presentation that we had made to you back in August, and also the presentation we made to the zoning board of appeals, that because it's going to be the same business, albeit under two ownerships, we'll provide cross easements to make sure that they're tied together, that there would be sufficient room for parking for all vehicles. In addition, as you may recall, we got into this discussion, your zoning code does not provide for storage of vehicles versus parking of vehicles. They actually put many more cars onto the site than would be, would be there under normal parking stalls, because parking stalls require more, more width specifically, because people aren't very careful coming in and out necessarily. When you have storage, as you have with an automobile repair facility, it's not the patrons that are going in and moving the vehicles around, it's the employees that are moving it around, and they know how to pack them pretty tightly.
And how many, how many bays is this new facility going to have?
The new is three bays, three bays.
And it's meant to operate in conjunction with the existing?
That's correct. The purpose of this is to relieve the existing facility so that they can do prep work and finish work in a separate building from where they currently have the paint and the body work being done.
Okay, that answers all my questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, wrong.
Sorry.
Your papers are.
Oh, sorry.
Any other questions or comments, or? So it's, it's two adjoining lots?
Yeah.
Two separate owners and everything else, okay? So I believe we want you to draft a memo, and then we will refer this to the Village Board, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I can prepare something and send it around to the board, and if everybody's good with it, we can forward it to the Village Board.
Is there a revocable consent or something you, you would have for, in case the businesses weren't operating?
Well, the, in terms of the, the cross easement?
I'm just wondering if they're operating together and they're sharing a parking lot, if they did sell one of the businesses, that might be an issue with parking in the future.
Again, that's something, I don't mean to take your thunder, but I guess something like that could be incorporated into the cross easement for parking, that.
Right.
You know, I mean, anybody who bought one of the properties would be burdened or benefited, if you will, by the cross easement, so.
I see.
That's, that's correct. And.
That makes sense.
Your site plan approval, you can make it, make that approval subject to the existence of, existence maintenance of the cross easements.
Okay.
So that if any change occurred, they would have to come back to you, okay, or your, or future planning board to affect any changes, and you would have control over that.
So not necessarily a motion?
Not a motion, yeah, okay. All right, so we, we're going to have our attorney draft a memo, and we'll send it over to the Village Board for their approval.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, have a happy holiday.
Happy holidays, thank you. All right, next up is 156 to 160 Wayne Avenue, the multifamily project.
Good evening, Chairman Gannon, members of the board. My name is Dan Richmond, with me is Pete Gado, Pete Gado and Associates, we're representing the Wayne Project LLC in connection with this property. We hereby submitting, respectfully submitting under a reservation of rights a revised site plan application to address the village's position that a condition of the rezoning of the property in 2011 to the MR-15 was that the number of units not exceed 24, and the site plan be in substantial conformity with the plan presented at the time of the rezoning. So as Pete will explain in just a moment, we are submitting a revised plan that does fulfill those criteria, it's 23 units, three bedrooms or less, does not require any variances, as Pete will explain. You may recall, we were before your board, 2022, 2023, on a plan that proposed more units, although they were studios, we actually thought it had fewer impacts, but again, we were advised that the village's position was that the rezoning tied, was tied to a concept plan along these lines. We have appealed that to the ZBA, and we're holding that in abeyance, in the hope that we can resolve and proceed along these lines. Again, the project and the property will be 23 townhouse units, four three-bedroom, 19 two-bedroom units. As Pete will explain, it accounts for the steep slopes on the property, and again, is completely zoning compliant.
He's got to be by the mic, he was, he's picking it up on the tape.
Thank you.
So I, I hope you have the, the site plan in front of you. But essentially, we designed the building just, just with that, so we looked at all the, all the setbacks, all the dimensional requirements, all the parking, and designed it in a way that it's, everything complies and worked with that, those parameters. So what we ended up with is a, is a, you know, happy little neighborhood, we feel that we'd be there, with small groups of buildings, from little townhouses and grass areas in between, and the parking is broken up with walkways into the building, and we have, we have grass areas on all the perimeter, we're screening on all sides of the, of all sides of the property, and the, and variety of native plantings to remain where we can, and we're going to plant new, new landscaping along the entire site. The groupings of buildings are, again, mostly twos and a couple of threes to move in there. The back whole portion of the site is undeveloped, unused, and is going to remain natural for, based on coverage, steep slopes, and just general use of the, of the site. We show a little turnaround on the back, there's a tiny little garbage, and you'll have to pick up as well, I mean, you'll have, you're going to pick up for the garbage, but we envision that also to do snow area, but to clear the driveway. And the buildings are designed, again, under, under the maximum height, so they're, they're going to be in scale with the neighborhood context of houses nearby across the street, and, and since it's a long deep site, that coming by, it'll just be like two, two little houses on either side in scale, driving up and down Wayne Avenue. So, and as you see, we broke up in between the buildings, again, there's, there's grass area from the passive recreation, or for, or just for general landscaping and screening for the units. And the darker color on either side is more of a taller vegetation to screen from the neighbors on either side. Have any questions?
Any questions?
Why are you here tonight? Are you here just to get a feel for it, or is this?
No.
Sorry. Obviously, we'd like any feedback your board can present tonight, but we'd like to begin processing the application. For example, we submitted an environmental assessment form, if your board could take the first steps in the review process under the State Environmental Quality Review Act by circulating for lead agency, we are hopeful your board can perhaps set a public hearing. But of course, we're here tonight to getting any, if there's any feedback or any questions or any information you need, just please let us know.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
No variances are required, right?
No, I mean, we, we, yeah, actually, we went, I think, above and beyond in doing that, even though the, the Village Code does not set forth, you know, the board, the code sets forth an additional lot area requirement for certain units, does not set one for three bedrooms, but we, you know, so arguably, none could be required, but we've nevertheless extrapolated from the zoning code and added a 4,200 square foot requirement for such units, based on the 500 additional lot increments required by the code. And even with that unmated, unmandated metric, we comply with the code in all respects.
Yeah, and to answer the question also, as Mr. Richmond indicated, if the board's so inclined, would be to pass a motion tonight to declare, this board to declare its intention to serve as lead agency, circulate it for SECA and GML purposes to certainly county planning and state DOT, ask the building inspector to weigh in, then the chairman, you know, I don't know what you want to do with the planner. If you already want to ask the board what you.
I also think that we need more drawings, like detailed site plans with elevations and maybe building elevation.
Do you have to?
No, I was, Rich and I were chatting, I, I think we should have the planner look at it. I also think that we need more detailed drawings that sort of give more dimensions about parking dimensions and, and street light locations. A more technical drawing is, would, would help me, and then also information about what the buildings look like. I remember when this came through originally, there's a lot of, there was a lot of drawings about showing birmingham at the perimeter, and how, how, more detail on how the site was being screened to the neighbors, the neighbors were very concerned, and, and the previous applicant addressed that. So I, I guess more, I think more than, than this would, would help me understand the project more. I don't have any initial concerns on it, it looks very similar to what was done before, but, but more drawings would, would help me.
So I, I understand that, and of course, we're going to do that, and I know you're particularly interested in that. But really, we've come here several times, so rather than spend every resource, every time, everything we're doing, we're, we're coming to with you with, with the complying plan to, to show that. Of course, with this, with the advancement, we're going to have elevations and details in sight, and elevations from all different streets, materials, every, every single thing, of course, that's warranted, full project comprehension. So that's 100% in the scope.
Okay.
Just wanted to get to this section first. Yeah, and then dimensionally speaking, the, the requirements, everything you have, parking dimension, for example, as per, everything's per Village Code, that's it. So that, that's what we're going to do.
Great.
So I think we're, you know, again, I, I think pursuant to your counsel's recommendation, if this could certainly be circulated, including to the building inspector, because again, before, you know, our client starts investing serious money in more detailed plans, storm water, the like, we'd like some kind of assurance that we're on the same page, that this is what the board is, what the village is looking for, and that we are, you know, fulfilling what the village envisioned with its 2011 rezoning.
You know, so what I'm thinking, you know, based on all of what you've just said, maybe it's best to, to send it to the building inspector for his interpretation, because if we send it to county planning, they're going to ask for all of these things, and eventually, we'll have to get, you know, and if the board wishes to send it to the, our planner, you know, we'd have to get drainage approval, et cetera, et cetera. So I leave it to you, if you're, if you want to send it to building inspector, just to get his interpretation, and we'll come back in January, and then circulate it. It seems like that might, you know, save some time and money and reduplication of effort.
I hear, but maybe in addition to that, the board could declare its intention to be lead agency?
Yeah, we're going to do that, this.
Okay, and then, and we'd be back before you in January, perhaps at that time, you could declare lead agency, and.
That's fine.
And we'd have a building inspector report, and then we can proceed from there.
Anyone else have any comments, questions?
I have a question on the walkways from, between the parking lot, parking spaces. What are they made out, is that concrete, or what?
It's just a striped area, so it's, it's going to be asphalt, we think, right now, or some sort of paving material, yeah.
Because it looks like a car can pull in there, it's almost the same width as one, it's the same width as almost a parking space. So that's why I'm just concerned, you know.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, people have suitcases or bags or bicycles or something, you know, it's, it's, we're trying to make that width, so that width, that width can be, it's a, it's a different, it's not a parking space now.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
You're meeting the ADA, you're meeting the ADA requirements, I only see one.
There's two.
Oh, there's two, okay. Just curious. We'll do a more thorough review, obviously.
All right, so do I have a motion to declare the Village of Suffolk Planning Board to be the lead agency?
It's intention to serve.
Our intention to serve as the lead agency under SECA?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Stangebridge, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion is carried. And do I have a motion to refer this to the building inspector?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Stangebridge, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
So I think.
Can I ask when is the January meeting?
I think it's the 15th, 15th, 16th.
15th of January. That should be the third Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 15th of January.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm not sure if the, you know, have 30 days, okay.
What's that? Oh, yeah, it is a short week.
I don't know if they're going to be able to declare, but we should have the building inspector report by January 15th.
The 15th it'll be.
Okay.
The 15th of January will be the next meeting.
Okay, and that's when we should have the building inspector report. All right, thank you very much.
Just to be clear, so Joanne, you're going to send this to the building inspector?
You know, Peter, could you get me a couple more copies of this, because it's got to go circulated around to people, so. Well, for lead agency, I do send out the copy of this or that, so how many, we have DOTs and.
But we're not doing that yet, are we?
Well, we can for, just, who's lead agency? So certainly county plan, it would really only be county planning. I guess you could send it to state DOT for lead agency. Yeah, but they, they wouldn't be lead agency.
Could get me four or five copies, just so that we have it.
Sure.
No problem.
Okay, great, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is Beautiful, 78 Lafayette Avenue. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stoddard Augustine, the application is for 78 Lafayette, Suite 100.
Okay. So just if you want to outline what you're looking to do?
Oh, it's basically a beauty studio for hair and makeup. The hours of operation are going to be from Thursday to Sunday by appointment only, so there'll be days that she won't be working there, just a hobby that she's planning to do, and she want to do it the right way.
Okay. Bear with me one moment.